Mayor, we're ready. Mics are live. We are recording.
I thank you all for being here. The regular city and bud hearing of September 3rd, 2024 at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilman Werner.
Here.
Yes, Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Mirlandowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Fantastic. If you were able, please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, my God, in the business of all with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda, I believe we have.
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
When we get to public hearing quasi judicial, two items, one is a sign plan review, one is a site plan review. I'd like to see if we can reverse those, make B, A, and A, B.
I need a motion.
I'll move that we reverse those two items, A and B, making first go to B and then A. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Vice Mirlandowski. Roll call, Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mirlandowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Now, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented, as amended.
As amended.
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mirlandowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should be completed and returned to the city clerk. When you're called to speak, please go to the podium and prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may receive a response if necessary. Any follow up will be handled by staff at a later time. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards?
We have one public comment card from Mr. Ted Sarandis.
Excellent. Mr. Sarandis, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ted Sarandis, 1578 Crestwood Place, and I wanted to advise that your inspired leadership as someone who's been attending government meetings at every level, federal, state, local, county, has led me to make an announcement tonight, and I'm not here to give a campaign speech, but I am running for Port Palm Beach Commissioner Group Two. And this is a special taxing district. I know the city attorney and the city manager could give us a lecture on the nuance and subtlety of special taxing districts, but most of the folks in Westlake in Palm Beach County have no idea.
Right.
So I am running to shine a light. I'm also running to represent the western portion of the county to include Westlake and the acreage that has no representation on this five member board. All of the incumbents are right along the coast. This is a gigantic county, and I am here to represent the people in the district, but wanted to let you know that I want to, if I'm successful on November the 5th, develop a strong relationship with you, the council, the staff, and the citizens of Westlake and the acreage, so we can be cognizant of this rather mysterious body. They oversee a port which brings in $262 million. They've never done a public audit of any kind. It's very, very mysterious. The incumbent elected official has serious ethical issues, and I am here to shine a light, develop a relationship with you, the council, the staff, and the citizens of the city of Wesley. There has to be representation. This is a huge county. So the folks out here going all the way out to Belgrade, Pahokee, South Bay, they have no representation on this organization. And the other thing, Mr. Mayor, is this organization, although they haven't done it in 50 years, has the right to impose a tax on the citizens of all 17 cities and towns. Now, they haven't done it since 1974, and my pledge is that they will never do it as long as I am elected to the Port Palm Beach Group Two. So I wanted to thank you for your, in part, inspiring me to run for office and to advise all the folks here and the citizens of Westlake that I'm running to be a voice for them, shine a light on this very, very mysterious organization, and to give representation to all of the folks west of the ocean who don't really have any idea what's going on with this operation. And again, thank you for your inspired leadership. You have presided over the most open and citizen friendly council in my 35 years of attending government meetings, and I hope that all of you will vote for me on November the 5th. Early voting starts the end of September. We've got, you know, the election, and thank you for the try.
Thank you, sir. Best of luck in that endeavor as someone who's ran a campaign. That's fantastic. Do we have any more public comment?
I received no additional comment cards, Mayor.
All right. Moving forward, we have a couple proclamations. Declaring October 2024 as Hunger Action Month. Whereas since 1981, Feeding South Florida has worked to end hunger by providing our community in need with immediate access to nutritionist food. And whereas hunger does not discriminate no race, religion, or age, in South Florida approximately 1 million individuals face hunger, food should not be an impossible choice for the community of the city of Westlake. And whereas Feeding South Florida leads hunger and poverty advocacy efforts in our community while transforming lives through innovative programming and education that provides economic growth and overall well-being. And whereas the city of Westlake is therefore committed to supporting Feeding South Florida so that together we can achieve a hunger-free South Florida. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Westlake, I, John Paul O'Connor, mayor of the city of Westlake, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby officially proclaim and recognize October 24 as Hunger Action Month. Be it further proclaimed by the city of Westlake that this proclamation is duly sealed, ribboned, and approved by the members of this council, the foregoing proclamation was sponsored by Councilwoman Charlotte Leonard, and upon unanimous consent of the council, the mayor declared the proclamation duly enacted. Hunger Action Month. I also have. Happy to present our Vice Mayor Greg Langowski, witness certificate of completion by the Florida League of Cities. This was on June 7th, 8th, 2024 in Palm Beach County, Florida. Congratulations, Vice Mayor. Got it. All right. Cool. And that was for the completion of the Institute of Elected Municipal. All right, consent agenda. This section of the agenda consists of routine or administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless a council member requests such, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on a future agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mirlandowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We have before us Resolution 2024-16, Approval of Tentative Millage Rates for Fiscal Year 2025. City Attorney, read by title, please.
If you would, Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully request that you have a presentation, a public hearing, then adopt a tentative millage rate, and then you consider the resolution.
Absolutely. It's not like I'm reading a script or anything. May we have presentation, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As we've gone through the budget workshops and presentations to you in the past, we have moved the proposed millage rate from 4.95 down to 4.7 based upon our last discussions. Also, I have a number of questions that were submitted to me that I would like to respond to and clarify for the public.
Please.
One of the questions was, what is legislative services? It's for a lobbyist that was discussed on multiple occasions on that item. One of the other questions was, has the insurance gone up 31%? Actually, budget to budget from year to year, yes. It's actually forecasted to be 20% over our actual budget for 2023 or 2024, 2324 fiscal year. We're forecasting approximately a 20% increase. Last year that went up actually close to 45 to 50%. That's what the market has hit us with, but we're proposing about a 20% anticipated increase for next year. One of the other questions was, what are in the dues, license, and subscriptions for all the different departments? Contained in that line item is the dues and subscriptions for Florida League of Cities, National League of Cities, Palm Beach County League of Cities, Florida League of Mayors, Black Chamber of Commerce, Florida City County Managers Association, Clerch Association, Forum Club, Leader Shop Palm Beach, cost, et cetera, are all in those dues, license, and subscription line items. They're spread throughout the budget. They're not exactly proportional to the different department that's doing it because as a contract city, we actually operate much differently than most other cities. However, the budget format that we're using, the prior council wanted it to look like everybody else's city budget, and it's kind of hard to do that when you're a contract city. It's a whole different ballgame. We may be looking in the future to go back to more of our first style of budget and budget prep presentations, which is a lot cleaner and easier to follow for the council and for the residents. The question was raised about 13.5% in the city manager's line item, which is, I believe, on page nine or 10. Part of that change, if you look at it, was we reapportioned some of the money that was being charged to that department from the special revenue fund into the general fund because we realized that I was not spending as much time in that fund as we were appropriating, so we moved it back to the general fund. And then also there's about a 3.5% increase. There was a question about what was the capital expenditures out of the city manager's budget. One, we purchased a Gator. If you don't know what a Gator is, it's a side-by-side off-road vehicle that we use for code and solid waste to oversee and to manage the back properties of the of the community. Also, there was about $17,000 when we relocated, had to relocate the building department out of one trailer into another building. We had to do some tenant improvements in it. Furniture, rewiring it, electronics and stuff like that had to go in there. That's where that was done in. There's several other questions that one of them was solid waste. There's in the solid waste revenue line item, which is on. If you go to your budget on the general. General fund. Yeah, it's general fund revenue detail. You'll see. Right page. Should tab this better. Anyway, general fund revenue detail, which is on page eight. Special assess, the question was, where is the revenue shown? It's under special assessments tax collector, and it's 2,000, we're be in that assessment, there's 2,477 units that are on that assessment roll. The balance of the units of the 2,900, almost 3,000 units that are CO'd are already prepaid, and that prepaid is down in the solid waste disposal fees item, and that line is where we showing now as revenues because it's prepaid. We have them prepaid so that you come on roll so that you're not having to do a direct bill for the next year once you own house. Right. One of the other questions was, and yes, the city pays the solid waste company. We have a contract with them, not the county. There was a question about operating supplies in the community services department, that is for trash cans that go out to the public, and also the cost of traffic signals. We have to pay the county for the traffic signal maintenance. And there's a question about contract finance. The finance department is part of the master contract with Infomark, who supplies the administrative services, finance, AP, AR, just about everything that operates within the city except for building zoning departments are on their own. And.
Impressed with the public engagement here.
Yes, I had a number of questions. I think I've answered all of them. If there's any other questions individually, I'll be able to answer them one-on-one.
And this is only the the first.
This is first reading based upon your instructions of a 4.7 millage rate.
The final hearing will be September 11.
Correct. Final hearing is September 11.
Okay. At the end of your.
That's the end of it unless you have any questions, Mr. Mayor and council.
Let's go ahead and open for council discussion. Do we have any questions?
We're on the millage rate item.
We're on the millage rate.
Yes.
Um, just one question to the city manager. How do you arrive at a millage rate number? I understand that the county sends us the rollback number.
That was the meeting you missed, I believe.
No, I didn't miss it. I was online watching it home with COVID.
Right. All right, we arrived at the 4.7 as a council.
No, no, I'm asking the city manager.
Any, any millage rate that you the way you develop your budget is you develop your what your anticipated expenses are. Then you look at your revenue sources, whether it's your state sharing, your franchise fees, any other fees you might be getting in from different areas that are solid. Now, some of them theoretically you're supposed to get, but they may waiver, so you don't depend 100% on them. Then you look at your budget and you say, okay, what do I need as a millage rate to fulfill what the desires of the council is? And you look at it and you say, I'm going to need to generate X dollars. You take that based upon the estimated value that the county gives you of all the properties within your new district and say, okay, what millage rate do I need to apply to get to that amount of revenue? That's where you end up with your initially proposed millage rate. Then from there, you work on if you want to fine tune it. If the council decides no, as we did, we kept looking at it and said, you know what? Instead of putting almost $2 million into reserves, we only want to put a million in so we can go ahead and reduce the millage rate lower than the 4.95 that was originally proposed. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I under, yes, I do. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? City Attorney, read by title, please.
Well, sir, respectfully, if you'd open a public hearing.
Oh, of course. Let's, let's open up a public hearing on this item. My script is completely off.
I have no comment cards, Mayor.
Let's close the public hearing.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, can I get some direction from the city manager with respect to Resolution Section 4 as additional information? So I would need to know the rollback rate as well as the percentage, which is if the 4.7 is adopted, is lesser or greater than the rollback rate? As you can see, this. Yes, Mr. Attorney. The general fund proposed mills is 4.7 mills. It's greater than a rollback rate of, the rollback rate is 4.5649 mills.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
4.5649 mills.
Find that with accounting. Yes.
And that is 2.996% difference.
Right.
Higher than the rollback rate.
Greater. Okay. Thank you. Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, adopting a tentative millage rate of 4.7 for the city's general operating fund for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, ending on September 30, 2025, providing for severability conflicts and effective date.
Need a motion?
Move approval of Resolution 2024-16, approving, adopting the tentative millage rate of 4.7 for the city's general operating fund for fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2024, and ending on September 30, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Vice Mirlandowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
You may.
So to ensure compliance with Florida statutes, please allow me to announce that there will be a public hearing held at 6:00 PM on the 11th day of September 2024, the Lodge of Westlake Adventure Park located 5490 King Fisher Boulevard, Westlake, Florida. For the purposes of hearing objections or criticism of the tentative budget and tentative millage, the meeting, the purpose for the meeting is to set a final millage rate.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to Resolution 2024-17, the approval of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025. Do we have a presentation?
Nothing to add to what my comments are already on the budget, sir.
Let's open up for council discussion. Any discussion on the budget?
No. Yeah, just one question. The the funds that we received, I believe, this current fiscal year that are going to the park improvements, 700,000.
Roughly, yes. It's a little higher than that, but it's the ARPA funds that.
Get those this year, didn't it?
We got them actually during COVID, is when they actually received them. There's two tranches of it. It has to be spent prior to the end of this, this calendar year. So since the project was there, it's been moved to SIDS. SIDS is under, under contracts and are actually pushing dirt right now to get that accomplished before then.
So that's a calendar year.
That, that particular money is, has to be spent by December 31 of 2024.
So will that show up in this current budget as an expenditure at some point?
The money has already been transferred. It is transferred. It does not show up in our budget.
Okay.
It's cash that's already been moved over to SIDS.
Thank you.
So open public hearing.
Mayor, I received no public comment cards.
Close public hearing? See any hands come up? Let's go ahead and read by title.
Yes, sir. Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending on September 30, 2025, determining and fixing the amounts necessary to carry on the government and the city for the ensuing year, determining the amount of applicable funds on hand, estimated receipts and expenditures for all funds identified on Exhibit A, providing for severability conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
The motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-17.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mirlandowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, again, in accordance with Florida law, I'd like to announce.
Please.
That there will be a public meeting, a public hearing on September 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM for hearing the person of objections or criticisms of the tentative budget. The meeting is for the purpose of adopting a final budget, and it'll be held in the chambers where we are presently located and the address presently on the record under the tentative millage rate.
Excellent. I believe we made an adjustment here to the, oh, Dwight, that's moved and approved, right?
Right.
We have an adjustment here to the agenda. We're going to do item B first. If I'm not mistaken, which is SPR 2024-03. The applicant is requesting a site plan approval of 1.3 acre site for a proposed 10,400 square foot commercial use building to be known as Westlake Palms. Let's go ahead and swear in any witnesses.
All those individuals could testify, please raise your right hand and be sworn. Somebody swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please proceed.
Disclosing ex parte communication. I had communications with the applicant on this item. Was anybody else?
I have not.
No.
I'm not.
Okay, excellent. And let's see the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. For the record, I'm Steve Allen, City Planner for the city of Westlake. Could have the presentation. There we go. Before use, site plan review for the Westlake Landings, specifically parcel F1, known as Westlake Palms. The applicant is requesting a site plan approval of 1.3 acre site for a proposed 10,400 square feet of commercial use building to be known as Westlake Palms, located again in parcel F1 within the Westlake Landings development. General area of parcel F1 has a future land use of downtown mixed use and a zoning district of mixed use. Again, the applicant is requesting approval of 1.3 acre site for a proposed 10,400 square foot of commercial use building to be known as Westlake Palms. The applicant is also requesting two waivers as part of this application. Waiver one is to eliminate two required loading zone areas, Chapter 8, Article 8.7, and waiver two is to eliminate one terminal landscape island adjacent to a lift station as required in Chapter 4, Section 4.682. Pursuant to Article 24.2, Section 4, the arts and public places ordinance, the applicant has chosen to provide artwork on site. The proposed artwork will be located on the east side of the building, fronting Landings Drive. Background, April 2, 2024, City Council approved to modify parcel F into three sub-parcels, parcel F1, retail mixed use, F2 as retail sales and services, and F3 as light industrial. The proposed site plan provides 3,400 square foot of main building, 520 square foot of outdoor seating area located on the north portion of the site, 17,000, 17,700 square feet of green space area, 5,760 square foot of permanent sidewalk and plaza area and artwork, again, fronting Landings Drive. Again, the applicant is requesting two waivers. Waiver one is to eliminate two loading zone from the Chapter A requirement. Pursuant to Chapter 8, they require all street loading facilities may be waived or less than the whole. The applicant submitted a loading demand analysis requesting a waiver to eliminate this requirement. The loading demand analysis states that tenant mix will not demand significant deliveries other than box trucks, for example, FedEx and UPS trucks, and loading zones are rarely ever used by this type of services that will be pointed into this building. The second waiver is to eliminate one terminal landscape island adjacent to a lift station as required in Chapter 4. Pursuant to Section 4.2682, landscape interior islands require every 10 consecutive parking spaces. The applicant has included in the justification statement that the lift station, that this location creates a more aesthetically pleasing appropriate design, therefore is requesting a waiver to eliminate the required terminal island. This lift station, as shown on the, on the slide, would be a screen from view with landscape material around it. Staff has reviewed the application, and the application meets all of the requirements of the mixed use zoning district. The site is proposing 48 total parking spaces, one low speed vehicle space, and two EV charging stations. The site will have three access to, to the site, to. The site will have three access to the uh, to the site, to one on Landings Drive and two of parcel F two that will be connecting to the Landings Drive and adjacent parcels in their development. The applicant has provided architectural elevations uh, that provides uh, architectural elements and materials such as metal canopies, aluminum trellises, and creates a multiple breaks in movements in the facade. This is the west side, the east side of the building. Here we have the north side, great okay, and the south side. Uh, staff has reviewed for uh, landscape requirements. Uh, the application meets the landscape um, and additional comments and actions uh, might be forthcoming at time of full landscape permit review. Uh, has reviewed for drainage, fire safety and traffic. The planning and zoning engineering department recommend uh, the following condition, and this is additional to the ones that you have in your package. We have worked with the applicant and the applicant has agreed to these uh, the following conditions. The selection of the artwork should be approved by the city council prior to issuance of a building permit. Regular semi truck deliveries are prohibited and shall not be allowed between the hours of nine A M. To five P M. And the city manager or the destiny may require the provisions of onsite loading areas for the development. If in their discretion, such areas are deemed necessary to accommodate the needs of the development, ensure public safety and mitigate potential traffic impacts. That concludes my presentation. I believe the applicant also has a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a hearing, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for the record, Donaldson hearing here tonight on behalf of Westlake Palms LLC. Glad to be here. We have several of the principals of Westlake Palms here in the audience, just in case you would want to quiz them on anything about the project. Most anything that I can't answer for you. Uh, Ozno did a great job uh, running you through the uh, back here, start at the beginning of the PowerPoint was queued to start at the, at the, oops. Can you queue me back up to the beginning? Cause it's queued in the in the middle right there. Ozno did a did a great job. Thank you very much. This is the master sign plan. Can you get up to the uh, to the site plan piece of it?
It's the second one.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. There we go. I'll go ahead and get started here. Uh, Ozno did a great job introducing the project, so I'll try not to repeat what he said. The site is located in Westlake Landings, uh, which is uh, you know, located south of Persimmons and west of Seminole Pratt Whitney. Uh, it's a one point three acre site, so it's not a giant site. Uh, here's a good perspective of it, uh, and it's important to note that uh, the site is actually located on the backside of the shops at Westlake Landings and the back of uh, of uh, of seven eleven. And so some of the juxtapositioning of the building uh, is really why we've designed it the way that we it's been designed. So hopefully you'll see that as we go through the overall plan and I walk you through that. Uh, this is the uh, current kind of illustrative uh, Westlake Landings master plan with tractor supply uh, immediately to the west and the red star denotes the the subject site. Uh, again, immediately to the east is the shops at Westlake Landings and then to the northeast is the seven eleven and parcel A one, which is undeveloped, uh, which is located immediately to the north. So the uh, the the sites is a corner lot. It sits on on two corners of of Landings Drive. Uh, and so this uh, this uh, graphic here helps understand, helps point out some of the uh, attributes of the site that are important to to understand uh, and why it's designed. It's a corner site. So the design approach approach taken on uh, taken for the site plan is to look at a traditional design concept. I don't want to say an urban, but a traditional design concept where the buildings uh, are brought to the street uh, and engage the street and engrage the public sidewalks. Uh, that's there's some some provisions in the code when it was originally written to encourage that. Uh, but it's not often that you have a site that really would facilitate it. And so this does. Uh, the site also has interconnectivity with uh, with the balance of parcel F through tractor supply. And again, that was something that was built in to the master plan and those interconnection points were incorporated in the approval for uh, tractor supply when you approved it a few months ago. Uh, and so uh, this is important because while the site sits on the uh, kind of a uh, the same road, Westlake Landings lines up with the main access road that runs in front of Publix, uh, which is which is great, which makes the site a great site, but it's also set back behind other buildings and other parcels. Uh, and so we went to sign, we really wanted the site to have a nice presence from the street. Uh, it's a corner lot. And so specifically, all the parking is placed on the west side of the site, on the on the side where and the rear of the building. The front basically is all good architecture and landscaping and done by uh, done by design. Uh, and so the building is four sided architecture. Uh, there, you know, to the extent why we are required technically to have a rear, uh, all four sides are intended to appear as fronts, and that's what we try to accomplish in this type of design. And we think it's appropriate for this site because of the fact that we're behind Westlake Landings. There's no direct visibility to uh, Seminole Pratt Whitney, and there's limited visibility uh, to Persimmons. And this is enable a way to really take advantage of uh, of the attributes of the site that we that we have. As was pointed out by Ozno, uh, we uh, have a uh, substantial green space on the site. We minimum lot coverage only eighteen percent. We exceed the minimum pervious area that's required by the site. And of course, for the mayor, we certainly have our golf carts.
One.
Uh, space as well as two garaging spaces there. So uh, absolutely. And of course, golf carts can park in any space, but we have one specifically designated for uh, for a cart. Uh, this is the uh, the site plan. Uh, as Ozno pointed out, there's an ax main access is is really technically from Landings Drive.
Where'd you put the L S E V? Sorry to interrupt. Would you put the?
It's uh, it's one of the closest spaces right off of the multimodal path where it connects to this sidewalk. So I don't know if I can point to it with here. You go right there, sir. Right up in front where it's the closest to
All right.
multimodal path there. So very appropriate.
Carry on.
So so the access uh, is uh, off of Landings Drive with the two interconnects. Uh, you know, parking again is in the back of the building, nice wide sidewalks, a lot of interconnectivity to the adjacent areas. Uh, and as you saw in the architecture, and I'll show you again, uh, there's incorporation of a lot of architectural metal uh, to create great shade and shadow uh, for the building and great presence for the building as it's perceived really from any any direction. And that's uh, by design. And you can see the beautiful green space uh, in the front of the building. Uh, the landscaping that's been proposed exceeds the code. Uh, and uh, we've incorporated a lot of different types of palms, many of them native, uh, hence the name Westlake Palms. So a homage to the name of the project that it says.
Is there coming off that multimodal, is there a soft ramp or is that gets you into the parking lot?
Yes, there would be at that 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 one's at the one, the one space there. So uh, the sidewalk that's uh, technically there in Westlake Landings, I believe is only a five foot sidewalk. Our sidewalk is seven and a half or eight feet, a little bit wider, so good for a golf cart. So you could come either way.
So how, so coming with a golf cart, how do you enter the parking lot?
Uh, you could come, you could come off of, oops.
Sorry.
You could come either off of here or from the vehicular.
What if there's a golf cart parked in that spot?
You're saying from tractor sales?
Yes, tractor supply. Tractor supply is really the likely place that you could get there, but you can also get there through through this location right there. But if there's a golf cart parked there, you're you're right. It would be, it would be.
I mean, wouldn't it be wise to just put the spot right next to it? And then allow that connectivity with the golf cart to be able to get in and out, you know? Cause as you mentioned, golf carts can park at any spot. So why, why block their only way in from the multimodal?
We we can, we can take a look at how that might work for you, sir.
Okay. Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, we we can, we can take a look at that and see what we could do. Uh, in this, these are, this is a rendering of the architectural design and you can see that a lot of intentionality has been given to the design. Uh, a lot of movement in the building, so it's not a straight facade like we often see. Uh, and then the use of a lot of different materials, uh, some architectural aluminum, uh, some of the uh, the the faux wood uh, materials that give you that nice warm uh, look, use of whites, but also the grays that tie in with all the other colors that are within Westlake Landing. So it really fits very, very nice. The canopies provide for shade. Uh, and uh, you know, if there does happen to be a, you know, an establishment that could take advantage of outdoor seating, that opportunity would it would exist there. So it really all depends on what that that tenant mix is. But we wanted to provide for a nice sense of of character for the overall.
This elevation here where you're calling the north end, I think it is?
Yeah, this is the northeastern corner.
So you're showing the retail, retail, that's the same.
That's the same unit.
Same building.
It's the same.
Same building. And I think on the plans that I saw in the packet, there would only be one.
You're absolutely correct. This is just, this is a lot of, you're just pesting you there, uh, uh, councillor. You're correct. There's just one sign that would be on that north face.
And the vertical sign there, that's the building identification?
That would be the building identification sign. This was an earlier rendering that our architect had put together, so the signage is at one hundred percent.
Is it gonna still be vertical?
The next, I think your next job.
It's awesome. If you wanted to be vertical, it'd be vertical.
I mean, that's unique.
Yeah, we we looked at that, so I'd love to have your opinion councillor, uh, cause there was a lot of debate amongst the
I'm okay with it.
And I was outnumbered, so I I'd be happy to listen to you had to say. So really, really nice style. These are the elevations. So this is the east elevation that would be the front. Uh, and you'll see that there's, the building has a has a nice hierarchy to it, uh, very much so by design. The end caps, a little bit larger in scale, wrapping glass around the corners, around both corners, uh, and in the front. Uh, the center element intended again to be a little bit larger, larger scale, and then the secondary uh, elements in the center, but all broken up with a great figure.
Quick question. Take, take these two little retails, you know, right there.
Yep.
Those are each how many square foot? Like the the first white one, yeah, those two.
Well, the 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 bays, the way that they're laid out now
Right.
um, are based, they they vary inside. The end caps are closer to two thousand square feet, seventeen hundred square feet, seventeen hundred square. However, the like.
My question, but my question to you is, and I assume you're not a hundred percent leased yet. We don't, we can't really foreshadow as to who's coming. If you had an amazing three thousand square foot tenant that wanted to come in, do you have the flexibility to give them that one location?
Yeah, so so ab- absolutely. Great question. And the reality is, right now, we have a four thousand square foot tenant uh, that is looking at the one unit here on the end. So it would be one unit. Uh, they would only have one sign, but it'd be
Right.
tenant. Uh, and so it is designed.
So you can chalk this up any way you need to.
That's the.
But will the elevation still look like that?
Yes, sir.
So that one would have three doors, front doors there?
It'd have three doors, but the doors would be would be kept shut except for what is required for ingress and egress.
Might back some.
Yep. Yeah, a- a- absolutely. And that's.
And one sign.
Pardon?
One sign.
Once, they would all, each tenant would, we'll get to the master sign, but if you were, if you were a tenant and you're facing the east elevation, you'd have one sign on that elevation. You don't get, you don't get multiple signs because you have multiple bays.
It would be a larger sign because of the lineal crunage.
It possibly. It could be, but it would really, we would, from a landlord's perspective, uh, the the signage would be limited to the corner tower, right? The tower element, which is a little bit larger in scale, and that's really where you would limit and you would not have signage on the other.
And it would be the three different colors still?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Even though it's one tenant?
Even though it's one tower.
Yeah, one last question on this slide. And I know I'm the one that asked to reverse the order.
That's right. Well, I, I had, my presentation was in the reverse order. You did it in the correct order.
Um, I didn't see anywhere in the documentation in the next plan, but since the picture is already up, are those channel letters on the signs? Or are they going to be canister signs? Or do you, should I hold that for later?
Yeah, ho- hold that. For the most part, they're going to be channel letters. There are some national trademark tenants that might have a a logo that would be a a channel, but otherwise it would be channel letters. It's a classier look than box letters.
Right.
Uh, and so we.
So except for the logo, there'll be channel letters?
That's correct. Yeah, you you don't want big giant boxes. They're they're tacky.
I'll ask more on the signs later.
And that, and that's fine. So so just going through the remainder of the elevations, just very, this is the west side. So this, the west side is where our, where most customers will enter. So that's uh, facing tractor supply. That's where the parking is. They'll park their car. They'll walk straight in uh, as well as the south side of the of the of the building. But uh, it's intended to be four sided. Uh, and um, you know, it takes a little extra challenges to make that work, but I think we've been able to do that successfully in this design. Again, landscaping extremely well done. Uh, a lot of nice native canopy trees and a lot of interesting uh, different types of palms. With good majority of the natives native, many of them in the in a similar family, so it's not necessarily, you know, busy, but different types of thatch palms, uh, old man palms and uh, all different types of things that will really make a a great elegant uh, uh, center that will be a little bit different than uh, uh, currently we have in uh, in Westlake. There are two waivers, uh, and the first is for a loading zone. And and both of the waivers that we're asking for are strictly for aesthetics. You could add a loading zone, you know, uh, the same ownership has have many centers, uh, many of them very similar size to this. Uh, as most of you know, you'll never find a FedEx truck or a U P S truck in a loading zone. They don't, they don't park there. Uh, and so uh, if we had like, if we had a restaurant, a large restaurant, which is not something that's being pursued here, we are talking to a bakery, could be a bakery, but uh, we're not looking at restaurants in this location. Um, then loading zones become a little bit more important. Uh, we have the area to put it, so it would be right in front of that green lawn that fronts right onto Landings Drive. Uh, it's not going to be used anyway, so basically there's a condition of approval that in the event that one is needed as determined by the manager or staff, we can add that. And the same is for the lift station. Uh, uh, each site is required to have its own lift station. Uh, we've placed it in the southeastern corner, adjacent to the Westlake warehouse, adjacent to a lot of open space and green area. Uh, and if we put it, you know, right out in the front, it'd be an eyesore. So simply it's uh, trying to really create a better looking project, a better looking design. And uh, one of the other other centers that uh, the Westlake Landing uh, principles developed is in Jupiter. It's called Bermuda. It's where the, if you've been to Leftovers there, you've uh, you've seen it. Again, it's four sided architecture. Uh, even even to the extent it's the meter boxes, uh, we have our own meter rooms on the inside of the building for the mechanical equipment. So you don't have a whole bank of meters like you might have on the back of uh, other shopping centers that are there because it's a four sided building. And so a lot of attention has gone to that, and that's why we would like to have that lift station not to be the the, you know, the terminated vista, the focal point of the of the project. So this uh, uh, slide right here would show you the the slot, the area in the red with the white in the northeast corner would be where the lift station would otherwise be located. You know, it meets all the code criteria, but it just would ruin the aesthetic of the building. Uh, and uh, to put it away in the in that southeast corner makes the most sense. And certainly there's the opportunity to add loading, but uh, again, for a site like this that uh, is a really a low traffic type of a type of a user, um, it just uh, just not needed. We can create a much better.
Putting you down here in the lower right corner.
That's where the lift station is. The lift station right now is right here. It's just one of those little package lift stations, so it's not very large and it's it's fully screened.
What was the red area?
That's where you would otherwise put it. That's where we don't want it because it's just anywhere on the east side of that building detracts from the beautiful architecture that we're spending all the money on.
Right.
So.
And the artwork.
And the artwork, yes, sir.
Any ideas in terms of artwork yet?
No, not not yet. Uh, we're uh, we're, you know, ideas are open. Throw them open. We're gonna, we uh, we've spoken with Mark Fuller. Uh, Mark Fuller has done a lot of the art in public places in Royal Palm and in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Uh, and so we're working with Mark and hopefully he'll come up with something that's site specific to what we're doing as opposed, you know, as opposed to buying a piece of art and putting it on the site.
This is, this is first reading, right?
This is first and final reading.
I mean, I think it would be important, and I'll I'll say it again, you know, not just. you know, not just solely for golf carts, but for bicycles and roller blades and so on and so forth, that they have a way off that multimodal.
Yeah.
Out, you know, if a if a golf cart's parked there, then they're not going to have a way off.
We just, just, if you want to make that a condition of.
I'd like to.
Feel free, we'll find a way to make that work in working with your staff. Not, not a problem.
Can you point to where the golf cart parking is again?
The golf cart parking is right here, and and we'll just create a passageway, a passageway to get right into that space in the same location.
I thought I saw on my plans here that it was motors, motorcycle spaces.
There was at one time, I believe we removed it from the final, from the final plan.
So do you have 48 spaces here?
Forty eight spaces.
Okay.
Forty eight with.
Two handicap.
With 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 the with the ADA space, with the.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Okay, because I only saw the same thing, 46 on what I had in my package. I kept counting them again and again, plus the two motorcycle spaces. So that was outdated.
Yeah, that was outdated.
Okay. Certi accepts staff's conditions?
Yes, yes, we do.
I was gonna ask counsel, how does counsel feel about not having any loading zones?
I'm okay with it, I don't think we need it here.
Yeah.
I don't think it's necessary.
I'm okay with it, based on this, this is a 10,400 square foot building, and our code threshold is 10,000. So it's right at the beginning of that loading zone requirement? And from what Mr. Herring is saying, the experience is, it's not, number one, you're not going to get a semi truck in there. So you don't need a 12 by 35 for sure.
Even semi truck wouldn't even fit in 12 by 35.
Amazon trucks don't use loading zones anyways, they just stop where they want.
Doesn't mean we need to, just because they do, doesn't mean it's right.
But Mr. Herring did say he's agreeable to a condition. Somewhere down the road, if the city were to see that there were some traffic issues.
Then we're obligated to provide it.
Because there is a design that you came up with, it's in our packet, showing the loading zone. If we can add that condition in there as well?
Yeah, yeah, we're, it's in there right now, and and it's, it's to the staff's discretion.
We decided something we need.
Right.
As a counsel.
To us. Future days.
It would be the city manager and staff to enforce it. In other words, if we start getting complaints, we start noticing that it's congested, et cetera, et cetera, with trucks, we just go back to them and say, look, you got a problem, put your loading zone in.
But it's written here in the condition.
Yes, it's a, it's a.
It's one of the conditions they've agreed to.
Correct.
Do you have the wording on that?
It it was on there.
It was.
Yeah.
Okay, because I just missed one too.
Actually, on the, on my presentation, the amended conditions.
While he's looking at that one, you're proposing the EV parking charging stations. Would you be agreeable to a condition that we have the minimum to, I don't know if we can do that, but he's offering to put in two EV charging stations. Could that be conditioned?
No.
No?
They're already there.
It's, well, it's a requirement of codes, so we'd have to have a minimum of one. But as a, as a practice, to be, you know, there's no guidance out on this yet, but to be, to be in in our, to 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 stay away from the ADA lawyers, we provided one ADA position and one standard position, and we try to do that. So we're required one by the code, and then the second position that we're providing is really just to be sure that we're as compliant as we can with what we perceive to be upcoming ADA policy at some point in time.
That's exactly why I'm asking the question. Can it be conditioned?
Well, it's there.
Well, you can make it a condition if you'd like, we don't have an objection.
What would your condition be? That they provide two EV parking spaces, one handicap, one not, as proposed.
Yes, sir. Yeah, you you could add it as a condition, is that way if somebody would do it, a staff amendment, it'd be a condition.
I have a question for the attorney on that. Mr. Mayor, I have a question on that, or legal. Question would be, DJ, if the state statute has changed where we can no longer require, how could we make it a condition of approval to require?
If they accept that condition?
Okay.
Yeah, you can, you can be, have a more rigid standard.
We're not imposing it.
I just want, I just want to make sure that we don't cross that line.
Important distinction for the record, it's being proposed as a condition, and the applicant is prepared to accept it.
The, so the only thing, okay, I'm just talking about being pragmatic and practical. If there's only two electric vehicle chargers, and one of them is solely for the disabled, that means that there's really only one electric vehicle charger. I don't know which is, I would almost rather see the two electrical vehicle chargers.
You know, personally, I would too, but you know, we're expecting policy to come out, probably at a federal level. And so, you know, ADA compliance of a of a property owner is.
I mean, it's a lot easier to paint some blue lines after the fact and make it.
No, you can't, because you have to have the ADA ramping and have to have all the right. So it's. Yeah, un- unfortunately, unfortunately.
Now, would it, would an existing structures be, are they expecting everybody to retrofit?
We'd have to see how the law comes down.
Yeah, it it probably would deal with new construction, I I don't know. As a matter of practice, in 95% of all of the site plans that we've done with electric EV chargers, we have provided for at least one ADA space. There are a couple exceptions that where people didn't take our guidance, but, you know, we, you know, we don't want the liability.
I'll read the tea leaves however you guys want me to, and I'm probably on that one. What you guys think is more wise.
He's agreeable.
Yeah.
If I may.
Please.
So we, we looked at the EV charging and the amount of parking spaces that were provided, actually, I think I provided more. But the, as the current code states, EV charging cannot count towards the overall parking. So the site is parked at the exact amount provided, 48. So by providing more EV parking, it would not meet the parking requirement.
Which we can issue a waiver for, it's one spot less, right?
Yeah, and and I I would ask you to do that, because to accomplish the ramp that you want.
Exactly.
I may lose my parking space. And and to be honest with you, I'd encourage you to modify the code so that if you want somebody to provide an EV charger, and it's a requirement of the code, they should be able to count it toward their.
And I think it could be counted towards.
Absolutely.
So let's go ahead and give staff direction now, but let's look at modifying the code to make EV spots.
Down toward.
Count towards the total number of weeks.
So that's the, the the code amendment that we presented to any agency, and you you're gonna be hearing for for first reading. We are striking through all that section.
Okay.
So that section will not be applying anymore, but as it is right now, it still applies. Until.
We should have taken.
Pass.
We should have done that item first.
Second reading, so.
Okay.
All of that will be struck through.
Good, so that legally, how do we navigate this?
No, don't worry about it, he's he's agreeable to a condition.
I think the conditions addressed it.
But we have to do the the parking waiver anyways, because it's to accomplish my ramp.
It's gonna go away.
It's gonna remove one spot.
Right, so so we we might lose one from the count to provide for the ramp, but the code is being amended. So let's just say, you know, assuming the code's amended.
We're gonna be okay?
We'll be okay.
Okay.
And while Austin, I have one question.
Please.
Austin, one of the conditions you're recommending is semi truck deliveries on site are not permitted.
Let me, let me pull up, because those are not the latest. Thank you. For the regulation.
How do you enforce that?
Let me.
The site is not big enough. Why even have that condition in there?
Maybe.
Would be observation and code compliance would be handling that.
Repeat that?
Would be observation and code compliance.
So that would.
So these are.
So a semi truck gets onto the property, it's in code enforcement.
Yeah. He's he's out cruising around anyway. So it's if.
You and, councilmember, you incite the truck, you would cite the operator?
So how it reads now is regular semi truck deliveries are prohibited and should not be allowed between the hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Regular.
Regulars have to be.
Where would they be delivering now?
All right, I'll yield on that one, I just don't think we need that condition.
The semi trucks, where would they, now where will they park?
So.
But we're allowing, but we're allowing semi trucks to deliver.
Yeah, it's.
You have to park to deliver.
For the record, now, as you're hearing.
And tractor supply.
There will, semis will, at some day, will go to every one of our commercial centers, whether they're delivering the initial furniture for the for the for the venue. It it happens, it happens on my, I mean, I live in a little dead end street, and and semis come down. Not every day, but.
One TV up.
Once every couple of months. And so I too had an objection, because I didn't want to be in noncompliance with this particular condition, because it it will occur, it's really the regular semi, you know, we're not seeking tenants that are going to require, you know, Home Depot types to buy deliveries at any time. And if the, if it were to occur, it would have to be scheduled in non-business hours so as not to interfere with any any specific traffic. But, you know, I just don't, you know, semi trucks, semi trucks come every once in a while to some establishments, and it's hard to regulate.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Please.
Please allow me to play lawyer. Could you give us some direction, what you consider regular?
Regular would be weekly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question first for us, Neil. On the art artwork that the applicant is going to be working on, and it says the selection of the artwork shall be approved by the city council. Before they get far into it, wouldn't they come back and come and seek a concept approval before they commit?
So the artwork, the artwork will be, will be, will come before the Arts and Politics Board. As that will look at it, will present it to the Arts and Politics Places Board, they'll make a recommendation to council, and then that's when they'll, it will be presented here.
So does the community recommend a selection?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. One more question for Mr. Herring. The the lift station, the screening part, that would be bushes and fence, or?
Both, yeah, yeah, there's a fence that will go all the way around around it, which is generally the way the law reads, you can't create an attractive nuisance, and then landscaping all around, large public parks.
Are we ready for a motion?
This is a public hearing.
Now, let's go ahead and open public hearing. And I would encourage any public comment on this item. But the applicant is an absolutely beautiful addition to our city. I commend the applicant for making the investment into our city. And if they want to foreshadow what might, besides the bakery, or potential 4,000 square foot something, maybe exciting.
Yeah, at this point, we're not, we're not really to the point where we want to fully disclose, but we have others, a lot, a lot of activity. And we have a stack of LOIs, and we're just trying to pick the best ones for the site that will be able to be in this location for the long term. Most everybody's looking at 10 year leases.
Wow.
We do a nice financial institution that looks like it's going to take the center unit.
Okay.
So we've got some, we've got some really good.
Respectfully, can we keep to the record, just to the matter? That speculation is.
Totally, it is totally speculative.
Yes, sir.
The people want to know. The advocate, the people. All right, I need a motion, it's gonna be, it's gonna be some jargon in there about my ramp and my.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would ask you to take the site plan up independent of the waivers.
Okay. So you can do that, let's open for public hearing first and see if there's any public comment on the item. Then I can close the hearing. If you don't, if anyone wants to say anything, all right, close public hearing. And I will take the motion for the site plan up independent of the waivers?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll move approval of Site Plan SPR 2024-03 as proposed with amendments to the conditions of approval to include regular semi truck deliveries on site are not permitted. To include.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do the amendment separately.
No, no, it was a waiver.
For the waivers.
But to that point, are you going to recommend with staff?
With the staff amendments.
Recommended as waiver, as conditions, are you changing those? Well, I, the staff conditions, I was just adding the word regular to that condition. It was in there. Oh, I didn't see it in here.
It was in, it was on the presentation.
For the, for the semi deliveries?
Right.
Yeah.
The right, the word regular was in there.
Okay, right, it's not on mine here.
Might be number three, I think.
It's, it's.
He didn't have it in the back.
It's part of the presentation.
That's why I'm just trying.
You're right.
And then adding another condition for the loading zone pursuant to staff review and approval.
That is on there as well.
And the EV charging. As proposed by the applicant.
Can you repeat that condition, please?
As proposed, as proposed by the applicant.
Okay, I have, just one thing, if the two EVs, it provided as it stands right now, since, because regular parking cannot be, regular cars cannot park at these locations, they cannot count towards the overall parking calculation, so therefore it would not meet the current code.
Well, he's showing. He's showing EV parking on the.
One. One.
One.
Just one.
Handicap, not regular.
Intended to, you also apply.
Yes.
But the code is being amended, so.
Subject, you can make that, it's just subject to adoption of a code amendment.
Okay. So that covers it.
Okay. Can we clean up the motion? I thought it was pretty clean. I'll move approval of SPR 2024-03 as recommended by staff and presented with four conditions. The artwork condition, the semi truck delivery conditions, the loading zone condition, and the EV charging condition. And does that address the mayor's concern about the configuration?
The ramp.
And adding a multimodal.
And adding a multimodal point of access.
Please.
Second.
City engineer.
Wondrous engineer.
And you are sworn, ma'am.
Yes. So I wanted to clarify, the eight foot wide pathways are that wide for, to accommodate the golf carts. When it's a five foot sidewalk, technically, we don't want the golf carts on those. So all the roadways within the actual pod, the sidewalks are five feet. So the idea for the golf carts on the main city roads, they're on that eight foot multimodal path. Once they come into these pods, they're going onto the roadway, because these are smaller, you know, slow traffic roadways. So I don't think it would be appropriate for that eight foot pathway for the building to connect to that five foot sidewalk, like, that's for bicycles and pedestrians.
Okay.
So the way that.
Let's get rid of it in its entirety. It was just presented to me that it wasn't off ramp, but if there's a golf cart there, then it can't be.
Well, you got your bicycle racks right there too, I think it's really intended for bicycles and pedestrians. So I think the way you're getting golf carts into this site is really through the roadway.
Dry road.
Is there?
Wouldn't recommend reconsidering that.
Does that, so like, right here at the mouth, I guess we call it mouth, but down here, obviously, that's a, that's an off ramp, that's a multimodal off ramp.
That's a five foot sidewalk that you see in the.
So where's my multimodal?
The multimodals is not on these, it's not here.
For Simmons. All the way up there, top lane.
But the one along the road is not multimodal, five foot sidewalk.
No, we're talking about right up here, top lane. So pretend you're on a golf cart, and you're on that multimodal pathway, where do you go?
Is that, so that is. Landings Drive is not equal.
That's.
It's not a multi.
Where's my?
It's in the road.
The multimodal path is on for Simmons.
So it doesn't come all the way up to the site? So they're using the roadway.
So they come off a Simmons route onto the road.
That's fine, I mean, if they're off for Simmons under.
And all those multimodal pathways are designed so that you could get.
Right, as long as there's no interconnectivity, but if there was, we need to accommodate for it.
Because you don't want the golf carts departing from the road and getting onto the sidewalk and being on the grass, it's just not advised for that right there. It's just not advised for that right there.
Is that all the way at the top? Is that five feet or eight feet?
Five feet.
Five feet.
All, you know, the other side.
Yes.
That's also.
So the only eight-foot section you're seeing here is on the west side of the building, the one that runs north-south. This is eight feet right here. But this is five, this is five.
So why is that even eight feet?
That's pretty impressive.
Design.
We're never going to complain about an extra three feet. It's not a bicycle and give more space for people.
Let's see. Okay. Fine.
Okay, we're getting rid of that condition. So.
We've made your motion, yes.
The motion is fine. The, the condition was not added.
Okay, so we're good?
Yes.
The motion is intact.
I second it.
Who seconded?
I did second it.
There's a motion.
Yes, I seconded it.
Good.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call, Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right.
Good job. Nice project.
Great.
Could you now take up the waivers, please?
Let's now entertain a motion for the waivers.
We're going to need the two loading zones.
That would be it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the requesting of two waivers as part of the application for SPR 2024-03, one waiver to eliminate a two-by-two, twelve-by-thirty-five loading zones. And the waiver two to eliminate one terminal landscape island adjacent to the lift station.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Leonard, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call, Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. If I may, please just remind council, please speak into the microphones.
Okay.
The other one, the sound is.
Now we're going to go. MSP 2024-01, the applicant is requesting approval for a master sign plan for a commercial shopping center known as Westlake Palms.
All those individuals could testify during the course of this court judicial hearing. Please raise your right hand and be sworn. Tell me, swear, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. Any ex parte regarding the sign plan?
No.
None?
No.
No.
Please. We could put the presentation, please. For the record, I was standing there on the benefit of the city of Westlake. Before use MSP 2024-01, this is the master signage plan for the Westlake Palms development. And the applicant is requesting approval of a master signage plan for a commercial shopping center known as Westlake Palms located in parcel F1 within the Westlake Landings development. The Westlake Landings parcel F1 is requesting approval of a master sign plan for a commercial shopping center situated in parcel F1. Parcel F1 is within the Westlake Landings and a master site plan that was originally approved by city council in June 14, 2021. The commercial shopping center known as the Westlake Palms includes a 10,400 square foot of building with seven tenant, tenant base and 520 square foot of outdoor seating area. The applicant is requesting approval again of a master sign plan for chapter six, sign section 6.9, master sign plan. The application includes a total of eight waivers, four for principal tenant wall signs, three for secondary tenant wall signs, and one for building ID sign. The proposed master sign plan includes the following sign, has one brown sign that has six tenants. The blue is the principal tenant wall signage. Red shown is secondary tenant wall sign. Yellow is the building ID, wall signs, and the little red tangover. It's the proposed Art and Polite Places Association. Tenants located in Corners Bay, Base One and Seven will be permitted to have three principal tenant wall signs. As you can see in the circles, they can either choose which side they want to have, but they cannot choose to have both, both sides. Bay number four will be permitted to have either two principal tenant wall signs. And tenants two, three, five, and six will be permitted to have two secondary tenant wall signs. The requested waivers for principal tenant wall signs. The applicant is requesting code waivers for copy area. Two sign per tenant, one street-facing sign and one parking-facing sign, total three signs per corner tenants. Two lines of copy with 30 inches logo. A copy area to be 70 square feet, which equals to two and a half square feet per linear foot facade and a maximum letter height of 30 inches. For the secondary tenant wall signage, the applicant is requesting, in terms of copy area, two signs per tenant, one street-facing sign and one parking-facing sign. Two lines of copy with 24 inches logo and a maximum 70 square feet of two square feet per linear foot facade. A total of three waivers for the secondary wall signage. And C for principal structure, the applicant is requesting waivers in terms of two lines with 36 inches for logo. This is the waiver table that shows you what the code requirements are, what the applicant's request, and what the deviation for each of the requests. And also the secondary ground sign is being changed or proposed to be changed. The Westlake Landings has a previously approved secondary ground sign shown on the left. The applicant is proposing a new style ground sign for this specific development that will also include six tenants. This kind of matches with the architecture of the building, probably being proposed. And again, this is the location of the secondary ground sign where that monument sign is going to go. And as well, this is the location where their artwork will be.
What, sorry, one of these monument ground signs already exists, correct? It's already in place?
Yes, correct.
And that's the one we're proposing to change?
Yes. However, this one specifically has not been installed yet.
It, it has not.
It's not been installed, but the overall development has these monument styles already.
Great.
Question for staff.
Sure.
Are you finished?
Yes, the planning and zoning duty burning have no objections to this master signage plan request.
And questions on your principal and secondary wall signs? You're saying two signs per tenant, one street-facing sign, one parking-facing sign. And the copy area is to be 70 square feet.
Yes.
Is that per sign or is that when you total them all up?
Per sign.
Per sign. And that, that's based on a 28-foot street frontage or building frontage?
Right, the tenants are, the, the measurement of the sign is per tenant frontage.
So then, as Mr. Herring indicated, he may combine two, maybe three tenants. And you're saying 70 square feet is the copy area, even though the linear frontage might be 75 feet.
It could be, it could be bigger or longer, but you're capped at the 70.
So it's, so it is capped at 70. And that's per sign. And then the question I have is, why do they need two lines of copy? Are they going to, are they going to advertise, identify the name of the store and then products or what?
It, it depends on the business. I don't also have the, I mean, it could also be a logo. And, but it, it's specific to the, what tenants propose. But that's, you're right, it could be two lines.
And is that what the applicant requested?
Yep, again, that's.
I'll pursue further with, with the.
Clarify your question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, Allison Herring here tonight on behalf of Westlake Palms LLC and presented the master signage plan. Now, we're excited to do that. Of course, take the opportunity, why a master sign plan? So when the Westlake code was being developed, was a lot of time and thought put into how signage was to be dealt with. And so the concept of a master sign plan is something that, that we strongly promoted because we've seen it very, very effectively used in very high-end communities. Because what it does is it enables a comprehensive approach and comprehensive evaluation of signage as opposed to a piecemeal approach. And I think Ozma would tell you, I mean, at the shops of Westlake Landings, he wished they had pursued a master signage plan because, I mean, it's been a lot of a headache for him to, not only to manage, but making sure that they're being consistent. And so, but as a part of that, you know, an applicant is rewarded because they're able to have specific waivers that might be specific to their project, their site, and their architecture. And so that's why the master signage plan is a part of the program. And so tonight, you know, coming in tonight, I, my, one of my, my tires was low. So I had to swing by the 7-Eleven on the west side of the road. And Mr. Mayor, you may remember when we.
Oh, I remember.
Dealing with that. But it's the logo of the 7-Eleven on the west side. I think it's close to about six feet on the, on the parapet. But if I were to, if you all were to stand out there and say, how big is that? You would say that because it's proportionate to the building and it looks like it's, it's in scale. So that's the benefit of.
They were also asking for it to be even larger.
We asked for seven feet and you said no greater than six. So as Ozma pointed out, the, we did a master sign plan for the common area signs with Westlake Landings when it came forward. And it included different palette of signs, some small ones and some bigger ones. This site reflected two signs. Full disclosure, I think one of the signs was likely considered when it was going to be just a larger parcel when it was going to be the adrenaline world.
Right.
And then, and then a smaller sign in the center. And so we're looking at just having one small monument sign to identify a limited number of the tenants that that exists. And it'll be located right in the center of the site, as you saw in the site plan. Maximum number of six tenants would be on that side. Reality is, we're probably only going to have probably four tenants, I would guess, at the end of the day, possibly five, but very unlikely, seven. And so this is, this sign is the sign that's technically approved. And it's just a very basic box sign. It's nice. I mean, but it's, it's, doesn't have any pizzazz to it. And so we, we're looking at trying to step it up a little bit, a little bit pizzazz. You know, the signage pieces are a little bit smaller. But, you know, we, you know, we really wanted to stand out and be something a little bit more exciting than, than the rest. And have, have to catch people's, know that, you know, people's eye and make them want to stop here and look, even if they don't want to shop. Not that they would stop by. So we're requesting approval of this alternative ground sign. It meets all the area. It's no bigger, it's same number of panels. You know, everything's the same. It does, it's a code, just a different design. So we're asking for your approval upon that. And then as it relates to the building signage itself, in very simple terms, what we're asking to do is, is we have a four-sided architecture. We have, we have a front on the street that's absolutely critical for, for, for our tenants to be able to be exposed to. Because, you know, first time tenants aren't driving through the parking lot. Some people may never go to Tractor Supply. So in more of the traditional design, very similar to the center that was done in Jupiter Culpriniana, signs were provided on both sides and that it will deface the public and block the space at the top. So that basically is the, the largest of the, of the waivers that are requested. Then the second request is that because of the design of the building, we want, we desire that the signs on different parts of the building to be just slightly larger. And those are the principal tenant signs. We basically have asked to have the ability to have them to be 30 inches. And, you know, your comment about the square footage was just the square footage allowed by the code and we didn't request any more. We just wanted larger letters because it's got to be contained within the boundary of that space. And the intent of two lines is really to capture, you know, the tagline, right? Somebody wants a tagline, whatever it is, you know, America is.
Danger.
Delicious, whatever.
Logo wellness spot.
Well, just something simple. It's, it's intended to create a tagline. It happened to be that the logo for Westlake Palms, the way it's designed, is two lines, Westlake Palms. And we're happy to do a vertical or horizontal. So that's really the intent of that. Beginning through the, the, some of the comments of Commissioner Warner, happy to work on some language with staff. It's not our intent to do a 70-square-foot sign of that, you know, is the, the architectural piece in which that sign is located is 28 feet. It's two and a half square feet times 28. That's it.
Well, you also have a letter height.
Max, maximum of 30 inches. And so it's not, the 70 square feet just happened to be what's currently surviving within, within the code. And that language was just maintained. So a very thoughtful discussion that's there. You know, obviously the location is why we're putting the signage where we're putting it. Because we are in the back, we're not up on, on the central prep windy. So if people come out the back to go to Publix, we want them to see the signs and everyone they're pulling in the parking lot. Hopefully to do some, do, you know, commence business that they would like to follow their retail order. So really straightforward. Ozma went through what the pieces were on the architecture. This is the west elevation. So you can see what we're calling the principal tenant signs or the end cap in the middle. And then the secondary are in, are in the, in the middle. Very likely, we're going to see between three and five tenants. We do not anticipate based on our current lease strategy to be seven. Although with buildings, you divide and design them to be flexible to go with, go and market. So that's what we're looking at doing, doing here. And then on the ends of the units, on the north face, we face Landings Drive. So on the north face, that is a corner lot. So a second sign is permitted. So we're asking for the same to be able to curl the south side of, of the site. And we're anticipating, you know, if I were the, the tenant, I would put the sign where it could be seen best for Publix, which on this particular case would be on the west end, but it could actually go on either side architecturally. And then we're required to have an address. Address would be on both sides of the building. And then the logo, either vertical or horizontal, we could, we could go with that is the building ID sign. The same language of the code. Even, even here, as you see where it is on the building, it wouldn't be 90 square feet. It wouldn't even come close to being 90 square feet. It's just the language that we adopted out of, you know, out of the code.
Or with the letter height, it's almost impossible. You'd have to add so many letters to get there.
Right. And in this particular case, the logo is 36 inches and then the letters are two, you know, 18 inches. So that's really what the intent is with that particular sign. And that's what we're looking at trying to provide. So really pretty simple, pretty straightforward. You know, examples, one of the projects that we completed a few years back on, in the city of Palm Beach Gardens, right across from Costco. It's called, it's called Northlake Gardens. And there's a.
Bole.
Stanton optical, there's a bole, there's a crumble. And almost the exact same thing. There we have 30-inch embedded letters on the end caps. 24 inch in the middle. And again, same thing on the backside. This in, in order to kind of fit with the architecture and help it read, read properly. So that's a request and respectfully request your approval.
Do we have council questions or comments?
Of course. It's a very nice tasteful design.
Thank you.
There's no mention here of the wall signs being channel letters that I saw. I know the drawing showed it. There's no mention of colors. Are individual tenants going to be able to put their own color sign up there or will it all be uniform?
Real, real, great question. So the, the standard color will be a dark bronze. So the standard color will be a dark bronze, almost a black to kind of tie in with the architecture of the building. Likely with push-through copy, right? So push-through copy means at night it would be white as opposed to being bronze, push-through copy, copy letters. If a tenant has a national brand and a nationally branded logo, we would allow them and encourage them to utilize their corporate colors.
On the logo or on the?
You know, that's what they, they.
They have recognition.
You ever go out by a Starbucks and it just says Starbucks and they're not green letters, you don't know what's there.
Right.
So here we would, we want, we'd like to have that diversity, but we pick a stand, if they don't have a nationally registered trademark, from the developer's perspective, it would be a standardized, standardized font. And which is identified somewhere in the plan, I don't know exactly what it is. It's some, it's not a Helvetica, it's something similar to that Futura, Futura bold. And then it would be a dark bronze so that it's almost black, but something that's darker than the wood color you're seeing there. Good contrast, likely push-through copies.
Okay, thank you.
Is there something that accounts for signs on doors and windows?
Yeah, your code is very, very specific about that, you know.
We don't allow that.
As, 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 no, you do allow it, it's a small percentage.
Got it.
And generally from a landlord's perspective, we tightly regulate that because if you see people pick up stuff and it starts to packy.
Agreed. Any other questions? Any other questions from the rest of my colleagues?
No.
Let's go ahead and take public comment. Is there anybody in the public who has some comments on the sign, master sign plan? No? Okay. Let's close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve MSP 2024-01.
Second. Which includes the eight waivers.
Which includes the eight waivers.
We have a motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Aye.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm very excited to hear you.
Appreciate you. Let's move forward with Resolution 2024-20 Residential Solid Waste Services Annual Special Assessment.
Resolution by title only. A resolution, the city of Westlake, Florida, related to the provision of residential solid waste services in the city of Westlake, Florida, approving the assessment rate for residential solid waste services for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, imposing a residential solid waste services special assessment against assessed property located in the city of Westlake for the fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2024, providing receivability conflicts and an effective date.
City manager? The attorney, any further discussion?
I have no thing to add. Again, it's on the 2,478 units currently and the rest are already prepaid for the rest of the year.
Just to reiterate, it is a 100% pass-through?
Yes. It all goes to paying the contractor for services rendered.
Counsel discussion.
Open your motion.
As long as there's no other discussion?
No discussion.
This is a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Oh, let's open up for comments from the public.
And no, no comment cards, Mayor.
Close. Sure, you, you'd have to come up and state your name and, you have to, name and address for the record.
So I just want to make sure that.
Sir, could you wait to get to the next one?
And I need your name and address.
My name is Paul Farina, 5694 St. Almond's Way in the Crestwood, Almond. So just a couple of questions that I fully understand, and I, and I thought I read that, that they had missed the deadline to increase it last year and trying to catch up. So is that, is that a fair statement that I, that I read?
Yes.
Okay. So now they're increasing us for what they missed plus a normal increase for services?
Yes.
Okay, so why wouldn't we break it up or do something to that effect as opposed to the homeowners having to pay this whole assessment in one shot? Because something that they did not do on a timely basis, on a timely basis. If, if they do the money, you know, just to put in simple form, and that's, sorry, this is the way I think, right? If it's a hundred dollars and they didn't get in on time, well, let us pay 33, 33, 33, or 50, 50 as opposed to the whole hundred. It's not our fault that they didn't get in on time, one. And two is, do we really need two days of pickup? For, for waste removal that might save us money as a community if we had it once a week?
Ken? Good, I mean, I will, you know, you, you might be aware, you may not, the entire contract is going out for bid.
Right, we're, we're working on renegotiating and going out for the contract.
We might have a different holler in its entirety. In the beginning, we weren't a big enough city to have it go out for bid. We didn't have any homes, so we kind of just had to piggyback on whoever the county was using. We had no choice, so we kind of had to take whatever they shoved down our throat. But now, we're actually a substantial size and we're going to be entertaining lots of different offers and renegotiating these contracts and.
To answer your question, the holler didn't move, miss any deadlines. The city missed a deadline for advertising for increasing the rates. So we needed, it came out of the rest of the funds, so it's came out of your pocket in another way last year. So it, it wasn't anything to do with the holler. They did their increases on time as they normally would. We missed the advertising deadline because some of the issues, if you've noticed, there are certain deadlines that if we don't get council approval by certain dates, et cetera, et cetera, and advertisements, we cannot increase taxes, we cannot increase things. So if you miss it by a day, you're out for a year, so you have to figure out how to cover your costs regardless.
Okay.
Hope that answers your question.
Yes, we're going, in terms of the one day, two days, you know, that's a greater discussion, but the good news is it's a competitive market now, where before it wasn't. So I'm expecting it to hopefully go down or have better services or have more days. You know, I'm definitely expecting now that we're in a open, free market in terms of trash, some, some great news.
We'll see what we get.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. No, thank you, sir.
And the contract that we're under today provides two, two times per week service.
Right. Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
George Johnson, I live at 5600 Sanibel, in Crestwood. Piggybacking on what the young man had to say. In cases as such, when you do miss deadlines or whatever the case, who's held accountable for that? There has to be some accountability somewhere besides taking it out of the homeowner's pocket or whomever's, is coming from. Because it's, it seems as though every time something comes about, we get these letters, assessment letters and different things. But is someone else being held accountable for it or are we the ones to pay for mistakes that are being made? Say for instance, council, city, whatever, whatever be the case.
Ken?
It was a combination of issues last year that we missed the date by, I believe, one day to get it advertised.
I mean, but I, I think more importantly, it's who's held accountable, which to your point, it's all your money regardless because it's the taxes that fund the city. So it's either, I wasn't, you know, we weren't going to be able to drop it down to that 4.7, you know? Because somewhere, it's got to come out of some pot to come home. So it's not like it's, it's the county's paying for it, regardless of what, I hate to say it, but we all pay for it as residents. What is the actual increase? We are just talking about like $28.
Correct, annually.
Yeah, we're, we're, it's a $28 screw up from last year to this year, right?
It's $27 per household per month.
No.
That's the 324 divided by 12.
But it's the difference between last year and this year is what the assessment was.
This year's assessment.
Last year, last year's assessment was 280 some change, this is 324.
Okay, so it's six, we're talking about $60, which would have been, and that's billed once on your taxes. Non-ad valorem taxes.
But is that also taken in accountability growth? The increase, the, the, the amount of houses?
Yeah, it's, it's in a, and I can't stress this enough, it's a two to the penny pass-through. The city, we're one of the few municipalities that don't make a dollar on trash services at all. In terms of, there's no revenue there. What they charge, we pass that up. And that being said, that was the difference in the, the amount of what was charged before and what was charged now. But it's not like, you know, the city's getting rich off trash, it's going into all these services. It's not, it's, it's just what they charged more. Everything in the world went up, trash went up $60. But I can't stress it enough, and I can't encourage staff enough when it comes to these RFQs. And now that we're a big enough city and the free market, I'm expecting some, some relief there.
And more accountability for.
And I hate the fact that we missed a day. And I definitely want to see more accountability because it's not acceptable. And it causes these issues.
Not only that, but we missed the explanation to go out with the assessment letter as well. Many residents, many residents were confused, absolutely. Yes, and like I said, we missed the explanation to go with it, which would have answered all of these questions ahead of time. But I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're asking it. Hopefully we answered your questions.
We, we like to make examples and do things the appropriate way.
Always.
Being a resident in Crestwood, I love where I live, I love, you know, but every time I look around, there are my pockets and, you know. My purpose for building and buying here was not to spend everything that I paid. My purpose is to live a life and live it more comfortably. Not with always, you know, I keep this like that.
We certainly missed the mark with explaining what the assessment was. It was completely, you know, misleading. People were thinking it was a brand new charge, which it wasn't. And, and we've already had that discussion with staff, that when we send these things out, we're gonna, we're gonna send it along with an explanation.
Thank you.
But so you know, there will be another one next year. But it's every single year, there'll be another one.
But it will be entitled.
As long as the amount changes.
And with an explanation.
And with.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I'm asking for.
And you worry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your comments. Do we have any other public comment on this item? Sure, state your name and address for the record. And did we hear, did we hear loud and clear on the last one, staff?
We got it.
Okay.
How you doing, Mayor?
Doing well.
My name's Rick Buszmiči, 5389 St. Vincent Lane. My social security number. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it clearly. So it's $28, even though it's just $28, what they've offered me, bucks, dog, we did, it's $28 per year. And that's going to continue or no? Did I misunderstand?
No, so your, so your trash services get billed on your taxes or included in your taxes. It shows up as a separate light item under non-ad valorem, which is one of those fixed amounts, okay? Because the amount changed, we had to send out this big scary letter that said special assessment. There was, there was one previously, you know, there was one last year, I don't know how long you've been here, but there's a big scary letter that comes every year if the amount changes, because they change the amount they charge us, we change the amount we charge you. But it's around 300 and something total dollars
324.
For the entire year for all of your trash services. And that gets billed to you in your taxes. And that's roughly $60 more or so than it was
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
But with now, but we have, the contract we have with them, I don't even know, my wife takes care of it, I don't even know the name of the company, what's the name of the company that?
Waste Management.
Waste Management. But you don't pay them directly, it's, it's in your taxes.
It's in the taxes, but.
No, you don't pay waste management monthly.
It's paid once a year.
But the city has a contract with them that states what they will charge.
Correct.
And is that, when does our contract with them expire?
This year.
The end of this year.
It's going out for bid now.
Okay, so this could be just temporary thing and next year, this isn't even a discussion.
Correct. Well, it's going to be a.
Depending, depending on.
It's going out for bid.
Depending on the bids as it comes back, the bid may for the next several years, hold the current rate for a couple of years. It depends on what comes back in the RFP.
So is the, just so I understand, is the kickback from some folks? That, that, to me, it just seems personally, $28, whatever it is, I don't want payments or whatever. But I guess some people, if they're living on a fixed income.
No, the, the issue was the letter that came in the mail, right? Did not land softly. The letter, big, bold letter says special assessment, right? And everybody's thinking that it's this new 300 and something dollar bill. And that was our failure as a city by not communicating and explaining what that was. It wasn't a brand new charge, it was included in your taxes last year, it's slightly more than it was last year.
What prompted your follow-up email that I saw to everybody that?
Probably, yeah, I don't know.
That's such a damage control thing that you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, I'm trying to get.
It's on my Facebook.
Thank you for your time.
You got, pleasure, thank you for your comments. Any other, please? All be afforded, staff, right? Gentle.
It was written, it was written to the statute, that's the issue.
93, 15393, all in circle. My only question is, does every city has the waste of margin included in the taxes?
I think the contract is, they're Republic or Waste Pro or it depends on which company.
Right, no, the question is, do, do, do all the municipalities have it included in taxes? I would say 98% of them do. I mean, don't quote me on that, but I would think most, almost every municipality does. I don't think anybody pays directly. I don't know the exact answer to your question, but most, all cities do.
Majority do, they don't do a direct bill, they put it into taxes. That way it's guaranteed revenue so that they know exactly what their cost and expenses are going to be.
Yeah. I mean, just, just to let you know, in the beginning, like in the beginning of Westlake, it wasn't included, it was directly billed.
Yes.
And it came right around Christmas time, people would get a surprise bill for almost 300 and something dollars right around the holidays and it was like World War III. And that's why we added it into the tax roll. Because you had all these upset residents that they got a surprise bill, they weren't expecting for about 300 something dollars right around Christmas time. But we don't make any money on it, it comes, it's directly passed through. We just collect it in taxes versus you getting a surprise bill.
No, I'd rather to have a surprise bill.
You're, you're the only one. I did not have outrage that we got before we included it.
No, having a lean tie to my house, yeah.
Not sure, well, I mean, there's only a few certants in life, but taxes are one of them, so.
My previous, you know, community, they have included in the water bills and things like that. Same bills that you pay, we pay for the waste.
Waste was probably in your taxes.
No, there are some communities that have water and wastewater systems. They do, do a monthly charge as part of your water bill. Again, the leverage is there, is if you don't pay your monthly bill, they shut your water off. So they make sure they get their revenue. It's, it's, it's done differently throughout the state of Florida with, with numbers of things.
That's the way we do it.
We can do, we can do this, we can cover these conversations offline.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just clarification. The process relied upon by the city of Westlake is conforming with the Florida statute. It's a special assessments. It's not unique to Westlake, it is statewide application. Many, many municipalities utilize this special assessment process.
But what we can do is we can also send an explanation.
Yes, sir, you can do that.
With what we have, which we did not.
Statutory requirements.
So I mean, it was a statutory requirement that we send that letter, but the landing could have been a lot softer.
She liked that one.
Any other public comment? I love the public participation.
I do too, I, I love it.
I'd be to help. 5847 Whipper Will, Whipper Will Circle. So as far as missing the deadline, we're not paying any punitive damages, right? Okay, so all we're doing is we're making up for the year where we didn't get the increase. Okay, so all we're doing is we're making up for the year where we didn't get the increase notice.
Correct.
Oh, and really, I need two days pickup.
Okay, I'm with you on that one.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ted Sarandis, fifteen seven eighty, Crestwood Place. I'm wondering if there's any opportunity for you or the staff to negotiate with another, uh, uh, another entity? Or is the, are you locked into SWA?
At the end of?
It goes up every year because that's what SWA wants.
Yeah, so RF RFQ, which we've mentioned a few times tonight, uh, it's an acronym that stands for request for quote, also known as RFP, request for proposal. So our contract is about to be over. We were locked in, now it's going out for RFP.
Right.
And we're entering that free market, which is going to allow these different haulers to compete for our business, and we're doing that right now.
Okay, so next year, we could get a another opportunity for a, for a lower cost, right?
Very.
So when will, when will that decision be made?
It's happening now.
We're working on the RFP as as we speak, and we'll be coming out for recommendations in the near future for the council to award to a different.
So you'll let us know.
That's it, sir. It'll be, it'll be.
It'll be a public meeting.
Very, very positive. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very excited about it myself. Any other? Public comments? Exactly. Won't be out there. All right. Yeah, let's not miss any deadlines. Great, let's, uh.
I'll make a motion.
I'll just public comment on that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty four dash one, uh, residential solid waste services annual special assessment.
Second.
Bless you.
Motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Aye.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have before us first reading ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero three, parking regulations amending section seven entitled recreational vehicles, trailers, watercraft, city attorneys, please read by title.
Ordinance by title only and ordinance to City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by specifically amending chapter eight entitled parking regulations by specifically amending section seven entitled recreational vehicles, trailers and watercraft, providing for definition of trailers, providing for prohibition of parking on rights away, providing for the deletion of article eight point nine E relative to electric vehicle charging stations, providing for the amendment to table eight dash six entitled required off street parking spaces, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
This was heard and presented at the previous LPA meeting. It was recommended to adopt. Is this a public comment item?
No, sir, it's not advertised as a public hearing. It would be in the second reading.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and open for council discussion. Do you have any further discussion?
None.
All right, let's have a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero three.
Second.
Who had that second?
You can solve it.
There's a time.
Councilman Marti- motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Aye.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. Council comments. Councilwoman Leonard, what do you got for us?
Mr. Mayor, I have no comments for this evening.
Councilman Martinez.
Nothing besides the Westlake five K has been planned already. It's January twenty fifth. All those looking to join, please sign up. Uh, links can be found on the Westlake website.
Active, ready to roll.
Ready to roll. We already have a first day of signup a couple of weeks ago.
I love it.
So looking positive. We have sponsors on board and it's only going to get bigger.
Thank you for spearheading that. That's great. Councilman Warner.
No comments.
No comments, Mayor, no comment. Uh, just, I'll thank all the public participation tonight. I loved it. I think these meetings are just getting better and better and bigger and uh, we couldn't do it without you and thank my colleagues for the leadership. Uh, we have some staff reports, city manager.
Um, just one thing to let the council know that I will be serving on the Palm Beach County City Managers Association Task Force regarding master transportation plan for the county. There's fourteen communities that are on this, uh, managers, which will be gathering details and data to come back to the elected officials to be able to set policy to look at a master transportation plan that suits the entire county, something they've been needing for a long time.
Well, they need that for the SRTAX. Great, I I commend you for, uh, taking that on. That's great.
Other than that, uh, just moving along real fine.
Fantastic. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Who's, we got fire, we've got our deputies here, we've got PBSO, whoever wants to go first. Fire took off, all right.
Good evening, Lieutenant Sowers of Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. I have to say it's nice to be the one not in the hot seat tonight, so. Been a little while since I've seen you all. Um, but needless to say, PBSO has been diligent. We've been, um, uh, working behind the scenes. We've had a total of one thousand five hundred and thirty seven, um, calls for service of those it was, we have one thousand two hundred and thirty self initiated business and residential checks, hundred and ten self initiated traffic stops, and a hundred and ninety seven calls for service. Um, we had a hundred and twenty eight traffics, I'm sorry, um, ninety written warnings, seventeen verbal warnings and twenty one citations. Did have three recorded crimes. One was a sexual assault between two individuals that knew each other. Burglary to construction. It was a shower head that was stolen out of a bathroom. And vandalism was a tractor trailer that drove into somebody's room, onto somebody's.
I saw that. Wow.
Part of that, we've been working with the city manager on some traffic hotspots with the school, the school year. We've had several of those, um, that have been rearing their head, and we've been trying to tackle those as fast as we can and get get them under control. And, um, other than that, that's all I have. You guys have any questions?
You got something?
I got one thing, Mr. Mayor, just as to dovetail into Lieutenant Sowers. One of the hotspots we'll probably be stepping up enforcement on is Waters Edge in Seminole Pratt. We have, um, two and three cars making a left hand turn simultaneously. So we will be stepping up with the special detail enforcement in that area.
Okay.
So if you're doing it, you can expect a ticket.
Good.
Please let us know, I got a lounge. Yeah, please don't. I know there were some issues with some golf carts in some improper areas. Please let us know. We've been having some issues south or north of you um, in the acreage.
LT.
Young man that lost his life.
Yeah, off on the four wheeler.
Please let us know if you're seeing any, any of the ATVs, UTVs, um, golf carts doing crazy stuff. Please let us know.
Thank, thank you and your team for everything you do. You guys are incredible. Thank you. Fire's not here. So, uh, let's go public comments. You have something? You looking at me?
I'm good.
Sure. Yep. Yeah, we're we're opening up for public comment right now. This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should be completed and returned to the city clerk when you are called to speak. Please go to the podium and priority addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted. It may be seen or responsive if necessary. Any follow up will be handed west after later time. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Four three nine fifty six ninety four St. Armis Way. So a question off of the the last statement that was made about the Waters Edge, that that's that turn onto Seminole Pratt by the church, am I correct? Is there any consideration to put right there? Because that gets very congested. And there's more and more cars coming that way, and it's borderline, so I I I understand what you said about two cars turning. But it's a little bit dangerous. Is there some consideration?
I could probably answer for the city manager, but I'll let him do it.
Installation of traffic signals is governed by a wa- what they call a warrant, has to be warranted for traffic, et cetera, through the county. That is a county road, and unless you meet certain criteria, they will not let you install a light. So we haven't reached that threshold yet.
The short of it will be, there's going to be traffic sta- it's government and it's red tape. There's going to be traffic studies done eventually. And when it really, really, really becomes necessary, they may very well put a, they may very well put a light there. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be two traffic studies and a bunch of people deciding it and and engineers and.
It it has to meet the warrant standards for traffic for the county in order to facilitate the installation of a signal.
Who pays for the installation?
It depends on who triggers it. Yeah.
We've got a development there that triggers it.
Potentially, if a development triggers the traffic requirements for the incoming and outgoing, that developer would end up having to pay for that signaling intersection.
The issue is it could happen.
In the meantime, people need to obey the current laws.
Yes. You know, let, no, let's hope nothing happens, but I guess.
Yeah, we as a city can't.
Trust me.
Let's do it.
I've, I've noticed, I've noticed that from go back to my engineer, we've talked about it from the day that Seminole Pratt was widened and the day that that intersection was put in, we tried to get a traffic signal installed and the county would not allow us to do it.
Any other public comments before I adjourn, please, sir?
Yeah. Um, still you, was all you, Sky, Skyco, fifty four oh eight, private place. Just a quick comment for the electronic, uh, thank you so much for being here tonight. Uh, he just, a lot of the kids are spinning the bikes on the driveways and driveways. I see a lot of group of them all together. So my wife is not a good driver. She always runs somebody. So I would please look out for them in the city. Okay, so that's all.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, Rick.
Again, my name is Rick Musumichi for City Clerk's office. It's common spelling on the last name. Fifty three eighty nine St. Vincent Lane. Uh, I had a question. It's partially also maybe a for PBSO. Westlake, as we know, is in general a pretty safe community. I know that there's been two pretty good brawls over at the basketball courts. One of which, and I'm also, in case you probably don't know, but I'm the, I'm the head, uh, baseball coach over at Seminole Ridge High School for for junior varsity baseball. And I've had a video sent to me because one of my players was involved in in one of those brawls. But it looked pretty ugly, and I just didn't know. And I know also I'm a retired police officer, so I know that I mean, you can't be everywhere, you're not going to catch everything, obviously, but are we, has anything been done?
Oh, yeah. So that, I mean, that was, that was dealt with pretty swiftly. I mean, I was dealing with with the commander almost directly, sending him things immediately. Um, he got the street team involved. They identified a lot of the people involved in that. Um, um, it's for the most part, it's come to a stop. They were preplanned fights. It was car pulled up, car pulled up, everybody got out, they fought, and then they ran away. It wasn't something that just happened organically. Um, they said me that the Wesley.
On the male or the female fight? Because I know there was a big female.
I was told of both of them, that they were planned, strategically planned, but, um, I know we did step up the, we have a community observer patrol, and I asked them to have more of a presence there, just because the presence of a police car will deter some of those things, and our deputies are most certainly aware of it, and they're, they know that to be a hotspot.
Yeah, when you were talking, and it just, what made me think of that was when, uh, Mr. Castle spoke about some of the prime and then said, yeah, people are making a left hand turn over there. I was thinking, well, ooh. But yeah, that was, that was something that popped into.
But also, but also the brawls are occurring on private property, which is HOAs, so it's not a direct issue of the city per se. It does involve our police department and stuff.
We've made it one. They're looking at it.
We've, we've made it a priority with them, and PBSO is aware of it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Fire adjourned. Let's get all the comments out, because I don't think we're allowed for.
We need a limit from coming back up.
Still there, was I again, fifty four, wait.
Yeah.
Uh, the other issue that I've been seeing the last since I moved in here a couple of years ago, uh, is the light. So we're walking around right here by the basketball courts. I do see L O V lights, and I see this drive sitting in a pedestal for more than a year now. So walking around, I see a lot of lights out.
You're talking about the big lights?
The big lights, yeah.
The HOA, if it's on the HOA property, it's an HOA issue. I'll mention it, tell them again.
Over here, right across from the courts.
Anything up until the street is HOA. This is all HOA, the fifteen acres.
All right, just, just for the future, guys, in in an effort to run a really efficient meeting, one public comment, get it out within the three minutes. We're not going to do this thing where we're up and down, up and down, up and down. Everybody, uh, everybody's got families and and out of respect for you guys as well. So, thank you so much. I am going to adjourn at eight oh seven PM. Thank you all.
All right, it's been fun. Deal with my old sign.